Okay, let's call to order the Sparks City Council meeting for Monday, July 14th with a roll call.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Sendl. Assistant City Manager McCormick.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, today we have the pleasure of having Councilman Anderson do our invocation for us.
Please join me if you are able and remove your hat. Father God, we thank you for this wonderful day. We thank you for your majesty, your greatness, and your blessings that you pour out on us each and every day. Lord God, we just pray that in the meeting here and each and every day that we make the decisions that bless this community and glorify you. We pray, Father God, for your blessings over our first responders, for all of those that put themselves on the line for our community. Thank you for everything you do and all that you are for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Mr. Abbott, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. Please start in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't have any public comment cards for the first. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? If not, I'll bring it back to the dais. And agenda, Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve the agenda.
Do we have to move anything? Madam Clerk, do we have to move any agenda items or do we just go to seven one and stop?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't need to move anything. Just proceed to seven one.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Looking for approval of the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes from the June 23rd, 2025, in the special Sparks City Council meeting on June 25th, 2025.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I didn't know if we were doing that or just vocal.
So, our computer just came back on, so that's good. Proclamation, the Sparks Piranha Swim Team Day. There's a whole bunch of you piranhas running around here. This Bybee, do you want to send a representative or three up here?
I sit in the front row.
Or sit in the front row so we can embarrass you on YouTube? With the millions of viewers we have? Let me have at least two of you up at the seat here. Come up and sit down back there. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Whereas, as the Sparks Piranha Swim Team, now celebrating 50 years of competitive swimming and leadership development, continues to inspire young athletes across our community, and whereas with 135 swimmers aged seven to 19, the Piranhas train at Alf Sworson Community Center five days a week, 50 weeks a year, with many beginning their swim journeys as young children at this very pool. And whereas the 2025 graduating high school swimmers demonstrated excellence both in the pool and out of the pool, including Hunter Dawson, Reed High School, will be attending Seattle University to swim. He is the NIAA 5A Swimmer of the Year, USA Swimming All-American, multiple state and regional records, and 2024 Sierra Nevada Scholar-Athlete. Avery Dimitropoulos, I hope I didn't butcher that, North Valleys High, attending Ottawa University, holds multiple school records and was honored for academic leadership and excellence. Jack Egan, Spanish Springs High School, attending UNR, relay record holder and honors diploma recipient. Kia Heanu Egarta, Reed High School, attending Ottawa University, earned a CTE in culinary arts. Ben Miller, Reed High School, attending Nebraska Wesleyan University, All-State Academic and Sierra Nevada Scholar-Athlete. Jackson Reddick, Spanish Springs High School, salutatorian, national merit finalist, attending Florida Southern College, holds multiple school and club records, 2024 Sierra Nevada Scholar-Athlete. Gavin Smith, Bishop Minogue, graduating summa cum laude, AP Scholar with Honors, attending Cal Poly for Engineering. Morgan Spital, Spanish Springs High School, attending UNR, received multiple academic and CTE awards, 2024 Sierra Nevada Scholar-Athlete. And Vlad Schustov, Reed High School, attending Seattle University, 2025 state champion in 100 back, holds club and high school records. Whereas the achievements of these swimmers are a testament to their dedication, their coach's guidance, and unwavering support of their families and community, therefore, on behalf of Mayor Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, we hereby proclaim July 14th as Sparks Piranha Swim Team Day.
You want to say anything? Public speaking is the hardest thing in the world to do. But you can do it.
Sparks Piranhas has pretty much shaped my entire life, like throughout high school and probably after high school. I've gotten a lot of guidance from Coach Mike and a lot of the older kids as to like what I should look for in a college search, and they've helped me with a lot of life skills. So, I'm definitely glad to see us recognized.
Give us your name for the record, please.
Vlad Schustov.
Glad, thank you.
I'm Jackson Reddick. The Sparks Piranhas have been like an instrumental part of like building who I am as a person and swimming in general. I think the skills that I learned, like with dedication and grinding, even when my practices got hard and like going every day and showing up, even when it was difficult, helped me to, you know, the salutatorian of Spanish Springs and get into all the colleges that I wanted to. And as a whole, like the entire thing just helped me become a better person and it's made me who I am.
Very good. You've got a great program over there. Very proud, Coach. Good job. What we're gonna do is, this Bybee has some proclamations for each one of you. We get you to come up here, line up, and we'll take some pictures and hand you your proclamation.
Yep.
All of you guys, come on. Everyone who got named, come on down. So you piranhas, if you want to sneak out now, you're more than welcome. You don't have to stick around for this meeting. It's gonna be several hours.
I'm saying one for government credit, for government class.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to consent items. Anyone wishing to pull a consent item? If not, I am looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell.
Move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.3 is submitted.
Mr. Rodriguez.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. 9.1, consideration discussion of possible approval of an agreement AC 6130 between Sportsman Solutions and the City of Sparks for naming rights and sponsorship consulting and management for parks and recreation facilities.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Emily Tate, Parks and Recreation Administrative Manager, for the record. The City of Sparks Parks and Recreation Department seeks to enter into a 12-month professional service agreement with Sportsman Solutions. Sportsman Solutions will provide naming rights and sponsorship consulting and management for parks and recreation facilities. Sportsman Solutions will perform an assessment of the local market and review of the department's facilities to determine the sponsorship value of each asset. Once a fair market value has been determined, Sportsman Solutions will complete their platform development and market city parks and facilities to obtain sponsorship. Once a potential sponsor has been identified, Sportsman Solutions with input from city staff will execute the sale of the sponsorship as well as negotiate sponsorship contract on the city's behalf. Should sponsorships be obtained during the contract period, the City of Sparks will pay up to a 20% commission to Sportsman Solutions based on the contract value of the sponsorship and whether the sponsor was a warm or cold lead. Warm leads are a contact or referral from a city council member or city staff member to Sportsman. Cold leads are contacts that Sportsman has made on their own. The commission is also further divided into tiers based on the length of the sponsorship term and is listed in detail in the contract that it was attached to the attack. During this contract negotiation, Sportsman Solutions decreased its standard commission from an industry standard of 30% to between 15% and 20%, depending on the lead source and sponsorship term. Additionally, this proposed contract does not include a monthly retainer, which is industry standard. I'd like to thank the city's attorney's office for their thorough review of this contract. Staff recommends approval, and I'm here for any.
Okay, question from the council.
Emily, thank you, and Nancy, and our attorney's offices for working through. You brought this to us before. We needed a little bit more specific, some questions answered, and I'm really happy with what you've brought back to us. Feel really good about it, and I'm super optimistic about the sponsorship ability that we can have to capitalize on some of our assets like Golden Eagle and parks and to generate new revenue for the City of Sparks is gonna be amazing. So, thank you.
Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, I'll just say, I'm glad we took a second look, and I love looking at the tiers and to incentivize us going after hopefully some longer deals, you know, that's better, you know. Obviously, they make a couple more bucks. We all want more, you know, in our city's coffers, but it's just nice to know that we can, you know, shoot for those longer deals and have money that we know is guaranteed to come in. So, good work.
Okay, anyone else? Not, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to approve the agreement AC-6130 between Sportsman Solutions and the City of Sparks for naming rights and sponsorship consulting and management for parks and recreation facilities.
Mr. Abbott.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. 9.2, discussion possible ratification of emergency actions by the city manager authorizing the emergency procurement of equipment to restore heating capacity at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount of approximately $840,000, with the City of Sparks portion being $263,508. Casey.
All right, well, good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. For the record, Casey Mensur, Treatment Plant Manager at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. So, this item is the result of an urgent situation at Tom Wharf where City Manager Louthen exercised his emergency procurement powers under the Sparks Municipal Code. Essentially, the heating system at Tom Wharf became compromised due to a mechanical failure. That, the resulting effects of that mechanical failure ultimately ended up in the loss of three out of eight of Tom Wharf's dedicated combustion heating equipment. Luckily for us, we had an engineer that was onsite, actually already working on design improvements for our heat loop system, and so we were able to basically redirect them, and then they were able to expeditiously evaluate different solutions, vet them, and then make recommendations on a potential fix to the solution. So, our engineers, they took into account the various different constraints that we had, including the heating demand, the available space, different structural considerations of any kind of building it would go into, and they recommended a number of pieces of equipment on how we could restore this heating capacity at Tom Wharf. Unfortunately, though, the lead time of some of that equipment was between 16 to 26 weeks following approved middles, and that's a pretty long, long time, especially when we're looking at, you know, where we are with this, you know, at this point in the year. And so, it was imperative that emergency procurement take place as soon as possible so that we could avoid any potential significant consequences of not having that heat capacity at Tom Wharf over the duration of the winter. So, staff strongly felt that this was the best way to mitigate risk to the city. Tom Wharf does have a contingency account to cover emergencies such as this, and that account was used for this purchase, which was able to cover the entire expense. I will say, though, that this item only relates to the actual procurement of the equipment needed to restore the heating capacity out at Tom Wharf. I do expect to come back before council and ask for an agreement to have the engineer finish the design, get us the actual bid package ready for a public workshop, and then ultimately a construction contract to award the work for them to install the equipment and fix the system. So, the Sparks Municipal Code, it does stipulate that upon emergency procurement, the actions of the city manager be ratified by this body, and that's why we're here today. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any and all questions.
Mr. Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. Where are we as far as, how far out do we think the equipment will be here? What is our timeline you're hoping for so that we can get the work done before winter? Is it looking good, or is...?
We are optimistic. We are looking at some contingency items as well, such as if we needed to rent, you know, rent a boiler and patch it in. But as it stands right now, we're looking for equipment to start arriving, I believe, in the beginning of November, and then as soon as things start coming in, hopefully by that time, we'll have our contractor on board and they'll be able to start piecemealing things together. And so then, basically, as soon as equipment arrives, it goes in, it's installed, we move on to the next phase. So, optimistically, I think we're looking at kind of late December, our coldest months out of the treatment plant. I guess the coldest month tends to be February, and we feel confident that we can, I guess, bide our time up to probably about late January, early February. So, it's, it'll be close, but we're optimistic.
Okay, so you will be coming back with the contract labor, the other piece of it, so when the equipment arrives, you can just roll?
Exactly.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
Move to ratify the emergency actions of city manager authorizing the emergency procurement of equipment to restore heating capacity at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount of approximately $840,000, with the City of Sparks portion being $263,508.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. 9.3, consideration discussion of possible approval of an interlocal agreement AC 6132 between Washoe County, the City of Reno, and the City of Sparks to establish a board to study regional fire and emergency service options pursuant to Senate Bill 319. Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. I'm here to present actually two items today. The first, for consideration, and it's Walt White, Fire Chief, City of Sparks. The first, for consideration discussion and possible approval of an interlocal agreement AC 6132 between Washoe County, the City of Reno, and the City of Sparks to establish a board to study regional fire and emergency service options pursuant to Senate Bill 319 in the 2025 legislative session. So, for possible action. Staff recommends, city council approve the interlocal agreement. There's no fiscal impact at this time. That is unknown until the, we receive bids on a study, but the cost of the study is not yet known, but it'll be shared equally amongst the City of Sparks, City of Reno, and Washoe County. Be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this interlocal agreement.
Questions from the council? No questions, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to approve interlocal agreement AC-6132 between Washoe County, the City of Reno, and the City of Sparks to establish a board to study regional fire and emergency service options pursuant to Senate Bill 319 out of the 2025 legislative session.
Mr. Rodriguez.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. 9.4, consideration discussion of possible appointment of two members of the, to the Regional Fire Study Board established pursuant to Senate Bill 319 from the following candidates listed in alphabetical order: Donald Abbott, Paul Anderson, Darlene Bybee, Joe Rodriguez, and Diane Vanderwell.
Once again, the staff recommends city council appoint two members to the Regional Fire Study Board. A little background information, Senate Bill 319 requires the creation of a regional board composed of two appointees, each from Washoe County Board of Commissioners, two from Reno City Council, and two from Sparks City Council. The purpose of the board is to evaluate the feasibility, costs, impacts, possible governance, and legal mechanism associated with consolidating fire protection services into a countywide fire protection district. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Well, so I guess, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm not sure how this would go, but I definitely would like to be considered for this opportunity. I do believe that my career in public safety could be an asset, these negotiations, and yeah, I'd just like to recommend myself. And I haven't talked to Councilman Anderson yet, but I do believe that his experience on the county health, especially with rooms and stuff like that, could be an asset as well. So, I would like to be considered along with Councilman Anderson if he's open to that nomination.
We have, and this is the, not trying to poo-poo anything, Joe, is there any conflict because of Joe's job for him to be on this board? I just want to make sure we don't step.
Nothing's coming to mind right now. I mean, he would be serving in his capacity as a city council member.
And Mayor. Yes.
I've also spoken with my dag, with the state, and there wouldn't be.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Vanderwell.
I just, I'm prepared to make a motion and support.
Go ahead.
You want to go ahead and type it in? Those two names, yes, please.
Okay, Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to appoint Joe Rodriguez and Paul Anderson to represent the City of Sparks on the Regional Fire Study Board established pursuant Senate Bill 319.
Mr. Abbott.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously with the slow guy.
Wasn't late.
Slow on the finger. 9.5, consideration of possi, thank you, Chief. Consideration, discussion of possible approval of Resolution 3468 governing confidential employees for the period of July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2029, with an estimated general fund cost increases of $6,519 in fiscal year '26 and $3,818 in FY '27. Shawna.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, Shawna Halterman, Human Resources Director, for the record. For your consideration today are changes to the resolution related to confidential employees. For background, a salary survey was conducted comparing salary and benefits to other local agencies. Those positions under the labor market average were increased to the market average, and those over market average remained unchanged. Salaries and benefits for the confidential employees are governed by resolution rather than a collective bargaining agreement. The proposed resolution is for a four-year term, but could be adjusted within that time period if needed. The major proposed changes to the resolution are, in year one, effective July 14th, labor market adjustments for positions below market, a new salary range is created, this is what happens when we make the labor market adjustment, and those at the bottom or the top of the range receive an adjustment in July. Those in the middle of the range are eligible to move up along with merit increases up to the top of the new range. There is no increased general fund impact in this unit for this fiscal year. An increase in longevity pay of $500, deferred compensation matching increase of $25 per pay period, increased bilingual pay to $150 per pay period, with a total fiscal year one impact of $6,519. In year two, effective July 1st, a 1.25% general wage increase effective following the first full pay period of July in 2026, and the estimated fiscal impact in year two is $3,818. In year three, which is July 1, 2027, the labor market study that we did would again be completed and analyzed with any adjustments made for those positions that are under market. We are also adding a deferred compensation match increase of another $25 per pay period, and increasing longevity pay by another $500. The costs for years three and four are unknown because it's pending the outcome of the salary study. And then in year four, a 3% general wage increase effective following the first full pay period in July of 2028. I'm open to any questions regarding confidential employees.
Question from the council. Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
I move to approve Resolution Number 3468 governing confidential employees for the period of July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2029, estimated general fund cost increase of $6,519 in FY '26 and $3,818 in FY '27.
Mr. Anderson.
My second motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. 9.6, consideration discussion of possible approval of a resolution number 3469 governing deputy police chiefs for the period July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027, with an estimated general fund cost increase of $24,633 in FY '26 and $7154 in FY '27. Donna.
Good afternoon again, Shawna Halterman, Human Resources Director, for the record. For your consideration today are changes to the resolution related to the Sparks Police Deputy Chiefs. Salaries and benefits for the deputy chiefs are governed by resolution rather than a collective bargaining agreement. This proposed resolution is for a two-year term. The major proposed changes in the resolution are, effective year one, July 14, 2025, a pay increase of 2% to maintain a 10% separation between the minimum deputy chief pay rate and the maximum police lieutenant rate. Increase longevity pay, the entire schedule is in line now with the lieutenants, which means the bottom of the scale at five years is increasing from $2,500 to $2,750, and the top is going from $7,700 to $11,000 at 21 years or more. from $2,500 to $2,750, and the top is going from $7,700 to $11,000 at 21 years or more. Paid parental leave can be used non-continuously, offering greater flexibility to employees. There is no impact to costs there. First year estimated impact fiscally is $24,633. In year two, which is effective after the first full pay period of July 1, 2026, a 1% general wage increase, and the estimated fiscal impact in year two is $7,154. I'm open to any questions.
Questions from the council? All right, seeing none, we're looking for a motion. Mr. Rodriguez?
I move to approve Resolution Number 3469 governing deputy police chiefs for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027, with an estimated general fund cost increase of $24,633 in fiscal year '26 and $7,154 in fiscal year '27.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries almost unanimously. It does carry unanimously. Thank you. Yeah, the non-functioning fingers. 9.7, consideration discussion and possible approval of Resolution Number 3470 governing City Attorney's Office employees for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2029, with an estimated general fund cost increases of $93,052 in FY '26 and $20,374 in FY '27. Donna?
Hello again, Shawna Halterman, Human Resources Director for the Record. For your consideration today are changes to the resolution related to the City Attorney's Office. For background, a salary survey was conducted comparing salary and benefits to other local agencies. Those positions under the labor market average are increased to the market average, and those under labor market average remain unchanged. The salaries and benefits for the City Attorney's Office employees are governed by a resolution rather than a collective bargaining agreement. The proposed resolution is for a four-year term, but could be adjusted within that time period if needed. The major proposed changes for the resolution are, in year one, effective July 14, 2025, labor market adjustments for positions below market, as already mentioned, a new salary range is created, and those at the bottom or the top of the range move up and have an adjustment. Those in the middle of the range receive their regular merit increases to the top of the new range. Also effective in 2025, increased longevity pay by $500, a deferred compensation matching increase of $25 per pay period. Paid parental leave can be used non-continuously, offering greater flexibility to employees. There is no cost impact. Estimated fiscal impact in year one, $93,052. In year two, effective July 1, 2026, a 1.25 general wage increase, and the estimated impact for that is $20,374. In year three, July 1 of 2027, again, we would analyze the labor market and make any adjustments for positions that are undermarket. Also in that year, deferred compensation matching increase of $25 per pay period, increase in the longevity pay of $500, and the costs for years three and four are still unknown pending the outcome of the salary study. In year four, effective in July of 2028, a 3% general wage increase, effective following the first full period, pay period of, in July of 2028. And again, I'm open to any questions.
All right, questions from the council? Seeing none, Mr. Anderson?
I don't have a question. I just want to say, Shawna, thank you and your office for working on this, as well as the city clerk, or city manager's office and all the bargaining units. I appreciate you guys knocking these out.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 3470 governing the City Attorney's Office employees for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2029, with an estimated general fund cost increases of $93,052 in fiscal year '26 and $20,374 in fiscal year '27.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Public hearing, Madam Clerk, 10.1, this is public hearing and action items unrelated to planning and zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is public hearing, consideration and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding, AC-6132, between the City of Sparks and International Association of Firefighters Local 731 regarding light duty assignments with no direct cost impact.
Okay, comments from the council? Questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? Can we give Bill a microphone, please? There we go.
Question I have is, what does no cost impact mean?
We'll have Shawna talk to you after she's done here.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
She's gonna present it right now for you, sir.
All right, anyone else in the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, we'll bring her back to the dais. And now we'll let Shawna present. It's pretty self-explanatory, no cost impact.
I'm not taking it personally.
Go ahead.
All right, once again, Human Resources Director Shawna Halterman for the record. All right, for your consideration today is a memorandum of understanding, also known as an MOU, between the City of Sparks and the International Association of Firefighters Local 731, also known as IAFF. The current collective bargaining agreement, CBA, addresses light duty pay, but provides no guidelines on how light duty schedules will be assigned. City management and IAFF met to discuss the issue and drafted the agreed upon MOU. If approved, this MOU would allow, upon written request, up to two employees per battalion to continue their work injury-related light duties, this is workers' comp-related right light duty, on a 56-hour work week, which is their traditional work schedule. They would not be shifted to a 40-hour work week. The light duty employees would maintain their regular work schedules and support operations while remaining within their light duty workers' compensation work restrictions. I'm open to any questions.
Does that generate any questions from the council? Oh, all right, I'm looking for a motion. Sorry to be so difficult, Shawna. Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding, AC-6132, between the City of Sparks and International Association of Firefighters Local 731 regarding light duty assignments with no direct cost impact.
Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to planning and zoning public hearings and action items, 11.1. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is second reading public hearing discussion and possible adoption of Bill 2839 to amend the DeAndrea Development Standards Handbook to modify the permitted uses within the general commercial land use category related to animal services and financial institutions. Add definitions for animal services and other matters properly related thereto in the DeAndrea Plan Development generally located east of Vista Boulevard, north of Gino Martini Parkway, and south of Los Altos Parkway, Sparks, Nevada, in the PD Plan Development DeAndrea zoning
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. For the record, Kobe Galano, planner with the City of Sparks. Before you today, we have a request to amend the DeAndrea Development Standards Handbook to modify permitted uses within the commercial land use designation to allow indoor animal services, financial institutions, and automated teller machines. On this slide, you can see the familiar boundary of the 861-acre plan, DeAndrea Plan Development, shown in blue. The DeAndrea Marketplace and DeAndrea Point Commercial Shopping Centers are shown in red and borders the western edge of the development. These two shopping centers are the only commercial areas in DeAndrea, and as such, the additional proposed uses would be limited to these areas. Immediately surrounding the subject site are single-family, multifamily residential and open space. The DeAndrea Point Shopping Center, north of DeAndrea Parkway, was primarily developed from 2004 to 2008, excuse me, with the remaining parcel being developed last year with the indoor storage facility located behind the Walgreens over there. The DeAndrea Marketplace Shopping Center, south of DeAndrea Parkway, was developed primarily in 2003. In 2008, the remaining parcel in DeAndrea Marketplace was developed with a bank, which is still on the site today. In 2007, City Council amended the handbook to allow banks and other similar financial institutions as permitted uses within the commercial land use designation. That amendment allowed for the construction of the bank on the site. Subsequently, in August of 2008, an unrelated handbook amendment was approved by City Council. With the recording of that 2008 amended handbook, it appears that the bank and similar financial institutions use was inadvertently omitted from the permitted commercial uses section. The proposed changes to the handbook include updating the handbook's permitted commercial uses, as seen in Exhibit 3, to allow indoor animal services as permitted by right, indoor animal services overnight, subject to review and approval of a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission, and financial institutions and automated teller machines. Expanding the uses in permitted in the DeAndrea general commercial land use category, whether by right or with a CUP, is consistent with the uses permitted in the city's C1 or neighborhood Also included in today's request is updates to the handbook's definition section. The proposed definition for animal services would limit operations to animal hospitals, animal grooming services, veterinarians, and animal spas. The definition also requires all operations occur entirely indoors and services be limited to domestic household pets, as defined in Sparks. The proposed definition for overnight animal services would allow operations or the boarding of animals to exceed 17 hours per day, but maintains limitations that I just referenced. The 17-hour limitation is consistent with all other commercial uses permitted in the handbook that require a conditional use permit to operate beyond those 17 hours. The intent behind these definitions is to ensure that any animal service that's proposed on the site is compatible with the area surrounding the commercial centers, which is primarily residential. That concludes the background and analysis portion of the presentation. Amendment to a plan development has ten required findings. Refinings PDA, PDB, and PDH. Staff believes that allowing the proposed commercial uses will support goal CC1 by fostering greater economic activity within the existing commercial centers and providing new services for residents within and surrounding the planned development. Additionally, staff believes small business owners seeking to operate animal services and animal services use could potentially utilize one of the existing tenant spaces found within the shopping centers in support of goal EV4. This amendment is intended to allow an expanded number of commercial uses in the DeAndrea commercial land use category in a manner that is consistent with the general outuses in commercial zones throughout the city and the original intent of the DeAndrea Plan. And the allowance of these additional commercial uses within the existing shopping centers is not anticipated to adversely impact this. Finding PDC, a fiscal analysis was not required with this amendment because there are no proposed changes to density requirements for land use. For finding PDD, PDE, PDF, and PDG, the proposed amendment, if approved, will allow additional commercial uses within the commercial land use designation of DeAndrea, which staff believes will better provide for the mutual interest of residents, property owners, and the public. This amendment aims to support the existing commercial centers in DeAndrea in a manner that is consistent with the original intent. The proposed changes will not vary the gross acreage of commercial areas or vary the ratio of residential to non-residential land uses. Additionally, the proposed amendment will not reduce common open space or change any of the commercial building design standards. As proposed, the changes do not benefit any one person and will allow any interested party to pursue development within DeAndrea in accordance with the handbook, making finding PDI. Refining PDJ, public notice was given as required by NRS and SMC on April 29. A total of 2,535 notices were mailed to all owners within the DeAndrea Plan Development and within 750 feet of the planned development boundary, as well as published in the Reno Gazette Journal. As of today, staff has received nine requests for additional information, but has received no public comment and opposition or support for the request. In conclusion, the existing commercial shopping centers were designed to accommodate commercial uses that serve the surrounding community, providing services such as grocery stores, retail uses, restaurants, gas stations, mini storage and fitness centers. Staff believes the proposed uses, indoor animal services, financial service, and financial services, will provide additional services for Sparks residents that are appropriate for neighborhood commercial center. For the reasons outlined in the staff report and this presentation, staff believes that finding PDA through PDG can be made, and the Planning Commission recommends the City Council adopt the proposed amendment to the DeAndrea Development. And with that, I'm available for any questions, as is the applicant.
Questions for the council, from the council? None? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais, and we're looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
First, I want to say thank you for working with the applicant. It seemed almost silly that a pet grooming facility couldn't be put into that plaza, but I appreciate the whole team working on this to make it happen, as well as fixing the oops from the past with the financial institution located there. I move to adopt Bill Number 2839 to amend the final approved plan for the DeAndrea Plan Development to modify permitted commercial uses related to animal services, financial institutions, add definitions for animal services and other matters properly related thereto, PCN 18-0040-PD24-0006, based on findings PDA through PDJ, and the facts supporting those findings is set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Rodriguez? I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, 11.2.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is public hearing discussion and possible adoption of Resolution Number 3464 to certify a comprehensive plan amendment to change the comprehensive plan land use designation from commercial C to tourist commercial TC for a 5.99-acre site located at 800 Holman Way, Sparks, Nevada, APN 027-342-11.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Lawson. Members of the City Council, for the record, Sienna Reed, Planning Manager. With your permission, Mr. Mayor, this presentation is going to cover three agenda items, all related to the site located at 800 Holman Way. That would be a comprehensive plan amendment, a rezoning, as well as a conditional use permit request, and that would be agenda items 11.2, 11.3, and 11.4. Notably, the applicant has requested that all three of these items be concurrently processed. This means that final action will be taken by the City Council on all three of the items. Typically, conditional use permits are finally heard by the Planning Commission, so just wanted to note that that is a slight difference in process this afternoon. On this slide, you can see the subject site located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Pyramid and Holman Way. The subject site is 5.99 acres in size and is located, or, excuse me, and is developed with four buildings that were constructed between 1966 and 2020. The Scolari's Grocery Store is located in the western portion of the parcel and has had a gaming license since 1979. Non-restricted gaming at the site was legally established and is considered non-conforming with the site's current C2 or general commercial zoning district. The area dedicated to non-restricted gaming increased from 1,136 square feet to 3,170 square feet in 2012, and then in 2019, the non-restricted gaming use was further increased to 7,800. And then in 2019, the non-restricted gaming use was further increased to 7,891 square feet. That was with the approval of a conditional use permit to expand an existing non-conforming use. And it's in that space that JJ's Gaming is currently operating. As you can see on the slide, there are a mix of higher-density residential, as well as commercial uses that surround the site. To the north are townhomes, as well as a gas station, car wash, and office. Townhomes are also located to the west of the site. To the south, across Holman Way, are duplexes, as well as Burgess Park. And then to the east, across Pyramid Way, are single-family residences, as well as a car wash. The applicant has indicated that the request before you today would further Nevada Gaming Control Board Regulation 3.0102 that prefers gaming uses conform with a local government zoning district and zoning standards. Moving on, the request for 800 Holman Way, the first request is a comprehensive plan amendment that would change the land use designation from commercial to tourist commercial. The current commercial comprehensive plan land use designation supports a wide variety of commercial, office, lodging, entertainment, institutional, and multifamily uses. The proposed tourist commercial designation also supports that same range of uses, but is more focused on tourist-oriented activities, including unrestricted gaming. Pursuant to the City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan, the tourist commercial land use designation is generally located adjacent to the I-80 freeway corridor and the Truckee River. However, there are only five locations in the city designated tourist commercial. You can see them on the two images on the slide. Three of these locations are adjacent to I-80. This includes the Wild Island Adventure Park, Western Village, and an undeveloped portion of the Copper Canyon Plan Development. The other two locations aren't located near the I-80 freeway corridor or the Truckee River. This includes Baldini's in our industrial area, and then also an undeveloped portion of the Tierra del Sol Plan Development that sits west of Stone Brook in North Sparks. These two locations are dispersed throughout the city and they're located along major arterials. And as proposed, changing the comprehensive plan land use designation from commercial to tourist commercial would reflect the existing pattern of lands designated tourist commercial in the city by creating a new tourist commercial designated area adjacent to Pyramid Way, which is a major arterial and state highway. The second request before you this afternoon is to rezone the site from C2 or general commercial to TC or tourist commercial. On this slide, you can see the uses that are permitted in both the C2 and TC zones. As you can see going through these uses, there are a variety of residential, commercial, and institutional uses that are permitted in both of these zones, either by right or with a CUP or conditional use permit. Whether it be multifamily, retail, restaurants, bars, or theaters, the C2 and TC zones both allow for a very wide range of uses. However, the current C2 zone allows for 28 uses that are not permitted in the proposed TC zone. Some of these uses include animal services, payday loan establishments, auto detail, light auto and truck repair, colleges, schools, mini warehouses, data processing, hosting and related services, hospitals, hospices, and urban agriculture. Alternatively, there are two uses permitted in the proposed TC zoning district that are not allowed under the current C2 zone. These include exhibition convention or conference facility, as well as non-restricted gaming establishment. And then the third request for 800 Holman Way is the conditional use permit, or CUP, allowing the currently operating gaming establishment as a primary use in the TC zone. Again, the existing gaming establishment, JJ's Gaming, is operating as a legally established, non-conforming use that was expanded to its current size of 7,891 square feet in 2019. JJ's Gaming is located in the westernmost portion of the shopping center. It is walled off from the Scolari's Grocery Store, and no expansion is proposed with this CUP request. The total parking demand for all tenants on the site is 179 spaces, and there are 284 spaces available on-site. And so the parking for the subject site does comply with our parking standards in Sparks Municipal Code. As no increase to the size of the non-restricted gaming establishment is proposed, there is no change to trip generation for the site. The applicant did, however, submit a traffic letter that documents the trips associated with all the uses on the subject site as they currently exist today, including the non-restricted. All right, so with that, I will switch over to the findings that need to be considered this afternoon. With three requests, there are a variety of findings. I have attempted to group them thematically here for the sake of brevity. And so first off, finding CP1 for the comprehensive plan land use change asks that the change conform with the land use and intensity designation that's specified in the regional plan. Here, the subject site has a Tier 1 land use designation, and properties in Tier 1 are predominantly developed with a range of residential or non-residential uses, and there are no minimum standards or other limitations on properties in Tier 1. As proposed, the comprehensive plan land use change supports the continued use of the site for commercial purposes in a location where public services and facilities already exist. That does comply with the overall intent and standards for Tier 1. Next, all three requests must be consistent with our comprehensive plan. Here, both the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning would maintain the opportunity to establish a range of commercial, office, lodging, entertainment, institutional, and multifamily residential uses. The proposed tourist commercial land use designation and zoning would, however, expand opportunities for tourist-oriented activities, including unrestricted gaming, supporting Goals MG1 and MG2 related to non-residential land uses and land use diversity. The non-restricted gaming use can also be viewed as supporting economic vitality and land use mixed diversity in support of Goals MG1 and MG2. And then finally, as the site is located in a previously developed area, city services are already being provided at acceptable service levels in support of Policy CF1. Moving on, in addition, all three requests must be compatible with surrounding uses. So here on this slide, you can see the designations and existing uses surrounding the subject site. Properties to the north and west are designated commercial and MF14, zoned C1 and MF2, and developed with commercial and residential uses. That includes a gas station, car wash, office, and townhomes. Properties to the south are designated community facility and MF14, zoned public facility and MF2, and developed with Burgess Park and duplexes. Properties to the east are designated commercial and intermediate-density residential, zoned C2 and SF6, and developed with a car wash and detached single-family homes. The lands that are designated intermediate-density residential and zoned SF6, and again, developed with those single-family homes, those are located on the east side of Pyramid Way, and Pyramid Way would act as a buffer between the IDR land use designation and proposed tourist commercial land use designation. In addition, changing the comprehensive plan land use designation and zoning for the subject site as proposed is compatible with surrounding land use designations and developed uses because they are generally commercial or middle-density housing products. The proposed CUP seeks to establish a currently operating non-restricted gaming use as a conforming use in the TC zoning district. And as no expansion is proposed, the Planning Commission found that the proposed use is compatible with the uses of adjacent properties that you can see on this slide. Moving on to finding C3, this relates to natural resource impairment for the conditional use permit request. And as proposed, the CUP request isn't anticipated to impair the region's available natural resources that support population because that non-restricted gaming use is already operating. It's not proposed to be expanded, and it will continue to operate within a developed site already receiving water and sewer services. Next, finding C4 focuses on how identified impacts of the conditional use are addressed. Here, parking and traffic were identified as potential impacts. As I just discussed, the site requires 179 parking spaces with 284 spaces available. Adequate parking is provided. And then with no change to the square footage of the non-restricted gaming use, no impact to traffic generation is anticipated to occur. And so, as proposed and conditioned, all impacts are addressed. And lastly, on the findings, all three requests also require public notice. For the comprehensive plan amendment, there is a requirement that the applicant hold a notice neighborhood meeting. That was conducted on March 13 of this year. Ten members of the public did attend that meeting. They expressed a variety of concerns, including the location of a casino near residences, potential future intensification of the site, traffic, crime, impacts to property values, and potential impacts to the grocery store. In addition, public notice of the Planning Commission meeting was published in the Reno Gazette Journal, and mailed notice was provided to property owners within 750 feet of the subject site. That notice went out to 285 properties. And then, public notice of the City Council Public Hearing was also published in the Reno Gazette Journal on June 6 of this year. I will note that four written comments in opposition were also received in advance of the Planning Commission meeting. Those comments are included in your agenda and express concern regarding traffic, neighborhood compatibility, adverse impacts associated with the casino, and potential expansion of a non-restricted gaming use. The Planning Commission is recommending that the City Council certify the comprehensive plan amendment and approve the rezoning and conditional use permit requests. You do have suggested motions for the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning requests, both on this slide and also in your agenda packet. And the motion for the conditional use permit, should you need it, is on this slide and in your agenda packet as well. So with that, I will go ahead and wrap up my presentation. As a reminder, all three of these items do require a public hearing, and we also have the applicant's representative here with us today, should you have any questions of them.
We got a quick question for Brandon. Do we need to read all three into the record before we start asking questions on the whole thing?
No, I think what you would do is, we can, we're having the discussion on all three at the same time. Before a motion, I would specify that the first one is the comprehensive plan amendment. Open up public comment for that one, and then have a motion and a decision on that one, and go each one, one by one.
I wasn't sure if we had to open them all up.
I think for the initial discussion, it can be all three at the same time.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Thank you. This is just a clarifying question. So if the current applicant or any future applicant wants to expand the gaming floor, they will have to apply for a conditional use permit and go through the public process of Planning Commission and City Council, correct?
For you, Mr. Mayor, any future amendment to the CUP would require that the applicant submit an application and ultimately go through the Planning Commission process. We are here today with City Council rendering a final decision on the CUP because it's being concurrently processed. But typically, final action is with the Planning Commission unless appealed to the City Council. But certainly, there would be a public hearing before the Planning Commission. Notice would go out. There would be a formal process to evaluate that CUP amendment.
Okay. Would it also require a neighborhood meeting?
Also through you, Mr. Mayor, the, an amendment to a conditional use permit would not require a notice neighborhood meeting. Mailed notice would go out to properties within 500 feet. We would also advertise within the Reno Gazette Journal. The only way that there would be a noticed neighborhood meeting, similar to what was done with the comprehensive plan amendment, would be if the council so chose to add a condition of approval to the current CUP to require that type of meeting be held by the app.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. This is a public hearing. We're talking about 11.2, which is a comprehensive plan amendment. And changing the zoning from commercial to tourist commercial on 5.99 acres located at 800 Holman Way. With that, I'm going to open it up to a public comment.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just to clarify, we're, because I think you said comprehensive plan and rezoning in that. The first one is the comprehensive plan change, right?
Comprehensive plan, I didn't say.
Yeah, 11.2.
It is changing the zoning, though.
No, 11.3 is the zoning.
Okay. Well, let's just do 11.2. How about that?
11.2.
All right. I do have one card for this, and that is Hunter Rand.
Hunter Rand for the record, Ward 2 resident. So I emailed Mr. Carey asking for a definition, and then I got impatient in like a two-hour period, and over the weekend read over 300 pages of content related to zoning from some very famous city planners, and it seems that this is a common path that cities go down. It seems very innocent on the surface. Right now, there's no project tied to this. It's just rezoning, so it's conforming, but what it's doing is reducing roadblocks in the future. Right now, if they were to ask to expand their gaming floor or sell the land, and someone wanted to build a higher intensity use there, like an exhibition space or a hotel or motel, zoning would be a roadblock for them, but now it won't be, and the land will sell at a higher value, if that's what the purchasers want. I think that going through, you know, following this since March, I haven't found a single public comment in favor of this zoning. I think there's been some misunderstanding about what's being asked because the casino exists. It's already there. It's grandfathered in. But what I'm saying is, maybe we shouldn't essentially write a blank check on tourist commercial in this area because it doesn't match the neighborhood. There is no buffer to the multifamily homes. This is along one of the busiest, one of the most dangerous traffic corridors in northern Nevada, Pyramid Way. And I could make lots of suggestions of what I think the City of Sparks should do on Pyramid Way, but, oh, wait! City of Sparks does not control Pyramid Way. So I guess you can make a request to the RTC, and maybe they'll put some flashing signals in for pedestrians, or take more houses via eminent domain to further widen and move where the traffic is. But as it stands, it is one of the most dangerous traffic corridors, and there is no plan to fix these problems anytime soon. It's not part of the RTC's 2050 Pyramid Improvement Project, which we all know will be finished in 2075. It just doesn't make sense. It doesn't match the neighborhood. It didn't match the neighborhood a week ago, right? And the neighbors don't even want a casino there. And I get it. It existed before the zoning kind of existed, and it's been non-conforming for a long time. Let it stay grandfathered in, but keep the zoning so when the land is sold, we can continue to have discussions like this, and we aren't steamrolled by lobbyists, by applicants that can frankly outspend us. I'm taking time off of work. I'm losing pay to come and speak. And I know everyone at the Planning Commission meeting did the same, you know? And it just isn't quite fair. And it really, I'll speak more on the next item. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm bringing it back to the dais. And I am looking for, first off, are there any other questions from the council? Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a quick question. I was trying to find it here in details, but as far as the potential for crime, was there any findings or was our police administration brought in on that conversation?
For you, Mr. Mayor, the findings for both the comprehensive plan amendment, the rezoning request, and the conditional use permit do not focus specifically on crime. They do focus They do focus on compatibility of the proposed tourist commercial land use designation, rezoning, or non-restricted gaming use in terms of that overall neighborhood compatibility. Ultimately, the planning commission is making a recommendation that the mapping changes with the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning, as well as the establishment of the non-restricted gaming use are compatible with the neighborhood. And so that is the recommendation before the body today.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, I'm looking for, I'm on Ms. Vanderwell.
Well, I just, I want to put some things on the record before I make the motion. I have over a decade in citizen planning, serving on both the Washoe County Planning Commission and the City of Sparks Planning Commission, along with close to five years on the city council. So I feel that I understand the application of our city code, and if I don't, the city has a very well-educated and competent planning staff to fully explain the application of our city code. I also have over 40 years in real estate lending, so I understand the reason that applicants want to bring their properties into conformance as being a non-conformed use can impede them from financing as banks and lenders want to lend to properties that are in conformance with the local municipal codes. And then in closing, also, I would not be surprised if they are not already doing it, that insurance companies will start looking at raising rates or canceling policies of properties that are not in conformance with local municipal codes. And while I am disappointed in, while I am disappointed, but I am not surprised, is that we have speakers using their interpretation of our city code to spread information. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, any other comments before we get to a motion? Go ahead, Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to adopt Resolution 3464 to certify a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation from commercial C to tourist commercial TC on a 5.99 acre site located at 800 Holman Way, APN 027-342-11, based on fighting, finding CP1 through CP4 as set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Rodriguez. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, 11.3.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is second reading public hearing discussion and possible adoption of Bill Number 2837, an ordinance to rezone real property approximately 5.99 acres in size located at 800 Holman Way, Sparks, Nevada, from C-2 general commercial to TC tourist commercial, APN 02734211.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council on this item? If not, we're going to open it to the public. I do have one speaking card. Mr. Hunter Rand, you're up again.
Thank you. I want to reiterate the fears as the planned intensification of the land in question. And when you rezone, it's really hard to go back. There's historical precedents in lots of cities, not a ton in Sparks. Sparks isn't old enough or big enough to have lots of questions about that. But, you know, the neighbors spoke, the neighbors submitted public comment, and what was really disheartening in Exhibit 14 was just seeing how long it took certain city staff to forward those comments to be included in the agenda, respond to community concerns. And I was very happy to see at the planning commission meeting, many members of the public coming out to speak because they were noticed. Zoning is something that's very hard to understand, and I think a lot of people would say it's a science, but it's really an art, you know? I was reading a book about how having a 24/7 nightlife in a city has the problem of noise, but the benefit of reduced crime. So how do you do that strategically, right? Well, you do it in neighborhoods that match. I don't want a 24/7 nightlife on York Way, but maybe in parts of Victorian Avenue, it might make sense. This zoning just doesn't make sense. Why can't it stay what it was, what it has been since 1991? Why can't the gaming establishment just remain as it is, grandfathered in? It doesn't make sense. And so thank you for your time. And I yield my time for 11.3 as well.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Bill.
My question is, how many homes are we talking about?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
How many homes are we talking about?
I don't know that we have that answer. Sienna, do you have an answer? No? Well, it's not, you're going to have to answer afterward. But we'll have Sienna answer you afterward.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak? All right, let's pull it back. We're voting on 11.3 now. Any further questions from the council? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to adopt Bill Number 2837 to rezone real property approximately 5.99 acres in size at 800 Holman Way, Sparks, Nevada, from C-2 general commercial to TC tourist commercial based on finding Z1 through Z3 as set forth in the staff report, APN 027-342-11.
Ms. Bybee.
I will second that motion.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, let's move to item 11.4, questions from the council. Seeing none, we'll open this for public hearing. Mr. Hunter Rand, you've got the floor again, if you'd like. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, I'll bring it back to the dais, and I'm looking for a motion on 11.4. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to approve the conditional use permit CU252-0003 associated with PCN18-0062 based on finding C1 through C5, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the three conditions of approval as listed in the staff report.
Mr. Anderson.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So will you amend your motion to reflect the correct number, Ms. Vanderwell?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson, will you amend your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I need anything more than that, Brandon?
No. Looking back.
Do we want to verify that before we vote? I'd hate to have that, have this come back again. We're good?
We're good.
Okay. All right, so any further discussion? No? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thanks, Sienna. All right, moving on to comments from the public. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on any item? Okay, seeing none. We'll go from announcements from the mayor, city council, and city manager. Ms. McCormick, do you have anything?
I'm sorry?
Council, do you have anything? Mr. Abbott? Join us on Wednesday night to go look at streetlights?
Got you.
There we go.
I know Mayor Lawson and myself, we're going to go ride our bicycles around. He has an electric bicycle, so don't try to keep up with him, but we'll be reporting streetlights in Ward 1 to Envy Energy. It's the third time I've done this, we just put our bikes around. If anyone's interested, reach out to me and we're going to go ride around. Takes about three, four hours. We got about 10 volunteers right now, so it should be a good time. And then Envy Energy takes about four to six weeks to get them lit. And we'll have that done. And also to my colleagues, if you guys are interested, I can help with some little technology, and my friends, don't twist our arms, go ride our bikes around somewhere, so we always...
I think we should do Ward 2 coming up soon.
Yes.
We can do all of them.
I am happy, since I also have a bicycle that's not electric.
Or gas-powered.
I got both.
That's true.
It should be a good time, though. Yeah. Keeping Sparks lit.
Anyone else have any comments?
For me?
Yes.
So I believe this week is actually like Parks and Rec staff appreciation day on Friday. Yeah. I want to say thanks for our Parks and Rec team, and along with that, there's an event that's going to be going on this Saturday that we're going to allow some street artists to paint a vehicle, it sounds like, and I want to thank one of the sponsors, it's One Reload, a local company that's allowing artists to go to town on their, on their piece of equipment, and looking forward to the celebration down there. Should be fun.
And this came about because of our Signal Box arts. And if you haven't checked those out, there's some very, very great art on our Signal Boxes.
I believe we're up to, is it 40 pieces or something like that? Quite a, quite a few pieces of art here.
I think it's 30.
30? Okay. I'm pushing, pushing them over. All right. And that's Saturday, 2 o'clock to 4, I believe it is, or 11 o'clock to 4.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Bybee?
I just have, I just like to thank all of our city employees who have to work outside in this heat. Tough job, and that's from first responders, it's our parks, maintenance, public works that are all out in this excruciating heat. Really appreciate the job that you have to do in tough conditions. And then in the winter, we'll be into the snow, but right now with this heat, thank you for, stay safe out there. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we're up to my favorite subject.
I'm sure you should mention that.